Okay. Hello, everyone. I like to call the May 6, 2024 workshop of the Greenville City Council to order. I am Mayor Pro Tem Monica Daniels, and I will be presiding over this workshop. Madam Clerk, can you call the row, please?
Sure thing. Mayor Connelly, as well as some who will not be able to attend tonight. Mayor Pro Tem Daniels.
Present.
Councilmember Foreman.
Present.
Councilmember Blackburn. Councilmember Scully.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson. Councilmember Willis.
Here.
All right. Mayor Pro Tem, you have a call.
Okay. We will now move to the approval of the agenda. Mr. Manager, are there any recommended changes?
No recommended changes.
Presentation is made by Councilmember Scully.
Number Scully, second by Councilmember Willis. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against?
Presentation passed in six years. Oh, no, one, two, three, four. Four years.
Pass it, right?
Yes.
We will now move on to new business. Mr. Manager, please present the first item of business.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. The first item on the agenda tonight is an update on the five-year plan for providing solid waste services. I'll now call on Director Public Works, Kevin Mulligan, to begin the presentation.
All right. Well, good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Very pleased, there we have it. Very pleased to provide a five-year plan update on our solid waste services, I believe. And we'll go through this presentation. You see, there's ample evidence here that I think we have the best service in the state, and we do it for probably the best price in the state. So let me talk about some discussion items for tonight. Mr. Bryant will take us through, Mr. Delbert Bryant, our solid waste manager. He'll take us through the number of slides on the how, the overview of our daily operations. I will come back and discuss route efficiencies, work we've done to streamline our services so that we make sure we're as efficient as we can be. Benchmarking, we've compared ourselves to 19 cities, all right? You'll see a table has 20 cities. We're number 20, but we were comparing ourselves, and we'll show you that comparison. Vehicle replacement fund, so aside from our personnel, our equipment is the backbone of what we do, and we'll talk about some of the challenges with our vehicle replacement fund. The vehicles are increasing in cost, and we'll discuss that. Next, you'll see some needed capital and facility upgrades that we have planned. And finally, our expected growth in our five-year rate plan and the city ordinance, proposed city ordinance revisions. Let me jump back to number seven, our five-year rate plan. The NC General Statute 160A-311 that provides for the ability of a city to have an enterprise fund. This is an enterprise fund, solid waste. There are two in the city, and a solid waste collection is one of them. A city may establish and revise rates for the services provided, and the fees to cover the cost of providing these collection services. Those costs, operating capital, utilities, facility improvement, building management, these are all the costs included in the cost of collection, all right? I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Bryant, who's going to take us through a bunch of slides on how we operate.
Good afternoon, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, staff, and visitors also. I just want to talk to you a little bit about our operations. We comprise the 48 employees. One thing that we're very proud about our employees is that from the refuse collector all the way to the supervisors, there are people that have been promoted to all of those positions. We give thanks to the city, Public Works Department, and the sanitation division for making these promotions and training available to our employees. This is just a picture of all the employees. These are the guys that make it work. They meet the daily schedules. They meet our weekly goals. One thing that we always talk about is the teamwork that they put forward to meet these goals, and sometimes we look at it as if they were all fingers. They couldn't do the same thing unless they were connected and worked like a hand, so they can do much more when we all work together and put together the teamwork. This is our daily operations. This is 27 trucks at a minimum that leave our site every morning to do our collections. We have six refuge routes, six recycling routes, yard waste, six routes, bulky item collection. Special services is where we help people that cannot bring their cart to the curb, and then we have five multifamily routes, which are dumpster collection. Sanitation equipment, this is what we do or drive or operate to do our collections. A lot of them are single operators, which reduces the manpower need. Also, we are compliant with emissions, the EPA. We also have idle reduction to save fuel that is incorporated into our trucks. If you will, take a look at these trucks, and you will see here, I will just point with my hand, the side guards. These are pedestrian and bike guards that we have on our equipment. Our trucks operate in the neighborhoods where we have people that are traveling by foot or on bikes, and this just keeps those people or bicycles from running under our trucks if they happen to not be paying attention. So this is just a safety feature that we have on our trucks. ULV fobbers are certified each year. That is in mosquito control. The pickup trucks are for our supervisors to enhance customer service. These are our refuse collections, the single family. There are about 22,000 accounts that we collect weekly. We have a 95% set out rate, which is equivalent to 1. million collections in the course of a year. This is curbside, and like I said, once again, single operator and automated truck. Refugees, once again, this is the dumpster service. These are the trucks that we use. These are the front loaders. These are single operators. Dusters are collected two or three times a week. We have approximately 22,000 accounts also in the refuse collection for multifamily. There are five primary routes, and they run each day of the work week. Special services, once again, this is where we provide service to our citizens that are not able to bring the carts to the curb. There are about 400 accounts that we have throughout the city. They're serviced by a rear loader. This is a picture of a rear loader on our wash pit. It's being cleaned up for the next stage service. Single-family collection process, once again, curbside collection, weekly collection once a week. This is recycling, once again, it's about 22,000 accounts, and we have about 650 houses per route on the recycling. This is a little bit less than the garbage side because everybody's been setting their recycling cart out on a weekly basis. Multifamily recycling collection is done as a drop-off, utilizes 96-gallon carts in our multifamily complexes. They're primarily collected on Wednesday. However, there are some that require two or more collections during the course of a week, and they are done both with the side loaders, which is the one-armed bandit per se, and the rear loader collections. Special Family Services for recycling, once again, physician-approved, about 400 collections. So we do provide garbage and recycling to our special service customers. Yard waste. Here you see our primary vehicles, knuckle boom truck and a leaf collector. However, if you can take a look at the leaf collector, there's some water quality improvements that we are showing here when we vacuum the bottle leaves in the gutter. Yard waste is collected on a weekly basis, and we have six routes for yard waste. We do like to say that we do not use plastic bags in our yard waste collection. Bulky items. We provide this service to our residents also. Bulky items are items that will not fit in your green cart. This is the furniture that we use for our electronics can be picked up. All of this bulky item needs to be scheduled. We try to schedule 35 collections each day. That way, we can make sure we provide this service. On certain days, we're able to do more than 35, but it just depends on how much stuff is being set out, and in particular, bulky item collection can be real busy at the first of each month. So that's what we do. Where do items go? This is an app that the city has or Public Works has that's available to our citizens. It's called Greenville Collects, and you can put in an item, and it will give you instructions on how to dispose of it. These are two items that can be put in, refrigerator or a plastic cart. So when our residents have questions, they can certainly call us at Public Works, but they can also use the website or the app to find out the information that they need. My collection day, this is another part of the app that they would enter their information. This will also give you alerts to when our service schedule changes or when you have an alternate service day. This also gives us the information what your collection day is and also what days your service will be provided on. Also with this, we try to provide all three services or four services in the same day.
Is that separate from the city council?
Yes, separate from the city council. Integrated mosquito control, these are the things that we have in our toolbox to control We educate our citizens on how to protect themselves. We provide yard inspection, personal protection, which can be personal use of DEET or ALL4 repellents. We provide a surveillance. We monitor the mosquito population. Source reduction is removal of standing water or items that will breed mosquitoes. We control larvae of pupae with treatments to standing water, and we also treat for adult This is just to give you an idea of what a typical home inspection for mosquito complaint could contain. It gives you some pictures or items that are usually in people's jars that may be an issue for mosquito breeding. If you would just dump these items over once a week, they will not breed mosquitoes. But as you can see, there are many items that can breed mosquitoes that are in yards, especially if they hold water. A bottle cap can even breed mosquitoes if it holds water for seven days. These are some common items for mosquito breeding. This is where we can do our surveillance and inspections. Tires are a phenomenal mosquito breeder because you can hardly ever get all the water out of a tire if the water ever gets in it. Also, you can see a picture of a trap. This is what we use for our surveillance. We trap adult mosquitoes. You can also see in the middle is an assay. It's a bottle assay. We try to make sure that our EPA-approved control methods are working, and this is a treatment as sort of a last resort to control the adult mosquitoes with a ULV machine loaded on the back of a truck. This is something that we like to keep in mind about small things in the mission that we provide. If you think you're too small to make a difference, try sleeping in a room with a mosquito, so he can annoy you. Yeah, that was good. Yes.
I was going to wait till you finish your section of the presentation. Do you mind if I ask some questions just for Delbert's part?
Go ahead, Councilman Blackburn.
Or should I wait for the whole presentation to end?
No, go ahead.
First of all, and is this the end of your part of the presentation? I don't want to jump.
No, I have a couple more slides.
Oh, you go ahead.
Kevin's coming back.
I have one. Are you going to ask a question?
Well, I don't want to, yeah, I'll go ahead.
It's going to be about trash collection?
It's about Delbert's section, yeah, the things you just presented. First of all, I just always have to compliment Mr. Bryant and, of course, Kevin, all your folks for refuse collection. It's a tremendous responsibility, and you all do a tremendous job. And Delbert, your drivers always wave at me when I'm running out pushing my cart in my little house shoes and some kind of hoodie looking mess. So they're so friendly, but they do such a good job, so thank you for that. Did you say there are total six routes, and you do six routes of different types every day? Is that right?
Yes, there's the garbage route, there's the recycling route, but we also within that have yard waste routes. And so in addition to that, there's the special services and the bulky items.
So that's a total, I think, of about six, but it's only a total of six routes in our city, right?
Six routes, yeah.
Each day.
Monday, Tuesday, on Thursday.
So that's?
Twenty-four.
Of each sector, of refuse, of recycling, and of yard waste.
Okay, okay, okay. So if there's six total routes, you're running two routes?
Six per day.
Okay, but there are different types. There are the bulky and the recycling and the?
The six of each one, yes.
Okay, so that means some days you're doing two routes of each type because you've got six routes, four days. You're all busy.
A million collections in a year for refuse. Recycling is a little less, but it's because of the set out rate.
That's a lot. Are the crew leaders also refuse collectors?
Not on a daily basis, even though they will pitch in to help us when needed. Refuge collectors are guys that do not have CBL license, so they can't drive the trucks.
We have a couple of things, and this may not be the time for this discussion, contamination of recycling.
Get that a little later.
Okay, all right, okay. And then when we talk about ULV, what does ULV stand for? I should know that.
Ultra Low Volume.
Okay, and that's for the mosquitoes?
Yes.
And I think I've asked this before, but that is, it only targets mosquitoes, and I think it only targets the female mosquitoes, is that right? In other words, does it harm other insects or water supply or anything like that?
There is a potential for all of those, but however, when somebody that is trained correctly and they use an EPA-approved chemical for mosquito control, those items are reduced greatly. What we have so far is been able to target other species. The droplets are 15 to 20 microns, which are very, very small droplets, and they are designed for mosquito control, not to impede or kill other animals.
Is that, and this, I know, you know, you're not a biologist or zoologist, but if a frog eats that mosquito before he, before the mosquito dies, is the frog going to die or is the frog just going to shake down?
They'll never know.
I don't think that's a good question to ask.
So it's not for amphibious life? It's not dangerous for amphibious life?
No, it's not.
Okay.
And the amount that we put out is, once again, ULV Ultra Low Volume. So we are putting out very, very minute amounts of chemical on a very, very small droplet, and the key is for that droplet to hit a mosquito. If this droplet lands on, say, a plant or some vegetation, it's going to disintegrate within an hour. It's not, there's no residual effect in any of the mosquito control methods that we use.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
I do have one quick question. You talked about trash pickup for those who cannot bring it around, and I know you mentioned the physician's letter, but is there ever an additional charge to those individuals for not bringing their trash around?
No, there's no additional charge. It is the same fee that a curbside customer would pay.
We ended that probably about eight years ago.
Awesome.
It's a different charge.
Thank you.
These are some of the items that we have on yearly or annual basis. We have the adoption street, which goes on all the time, which is a community-based effort for litter removal from our streets. We ask that a person that has an adoption street or a group that has adoption street to clean their particular area four times a year. We have a shred event, which usually falls in the fall of the year. We have tire and battery collection going spray cleanup, but also the tire collection is really important for mosquito control. We have National Garbage Men's Day, which is in June. We have National Night Out. We participate in with the police department, which is usually in August. We have touchy truck events that are spread out through the year where we go to different places and let children experience blowing the horn in the garbage trucks or so forth, or just seeing what we do. We also participate with human resources and employment job affairs. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Kevin Martin.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. You would never hear it from Mr. Bryant, but he is in the state, recognizes one of the leading mosquito control experts in the city, so just a shout out to Mr. Delbert on that. And one of the greatest leaders we have here. Outstanding. Outstanding. So let me jump into, I talked about route efficiency, and Delbert gave you all the things that we do in our eight-hour day, and then we kind of dig into that eight hours. A little typo here, this is actually 6.25 hours. So we need 45 minutes to do our fuel, our maintenance, our pre-trip inspections, our post-trip inspections. Takes us typically, and I'll show you in a bit how we analyze this, but we saw that it takes us about a half hour to get to the landfill, dump at the landfill, get back on route, and then there's two 15-minute breaks in the day. So when we look at that, when we analyze that data, we see that we have 6.25 hours. So, and here it's correct. Collection rate, 6.25 hours. We collected a year of data, how many times the arm is moving up. We have technology that tells us in our 85th percentile of collection data, we showed we generally had about 150 houses per hour. That's how many houses we were at per hour. When we think back to our rear loader collection 10 years ago or more, we were at 500 houses per day with three people. Now we're at 950 with one person, so a lot of efficiency built in there. And when we're looking to develop more efficient routes, certainly we account for driving to the route, the landfill, the house density, and as well as the return trip and the cleanup and maintenance. Again, our truck capacities, we look at that, garbage eight to 10 tons, recycling four to six, just because of the size and volume of recycling. This was our collection map in 2023. Our Thursday and Tuesday, we were maxed out here. So when we added this section of development down here off of Ivy Road, we could not put that in a Tuesday and Thursday, or Tuesday where it would blow, we had to throw it in a Friday. Therefore, we had crews all over the place, and it wasn't the most efficient, so we looked at what we needed to do to convert 12,000 single-family residences, change their day of service. We started that in June of last year, and we plan to take one year to do that. You know, every other month, we're going to move 2,000 folks to a different day of service to have a quadrant based, right? And one of the things we needed to get right, besides design the correct routes, was the marketing campaign. This was critical. And you know, something as low tech as these stickers made all the difference in the world, and I'm sure a lot of you have seen these. Again, 12,000 out of the 22,000 were moved to a different day, and this was very, very successful. So successful that instead of taking a year, we did this in about five months. You know, we did 2,000, then we did another 2,000, and then we saw how successful that was, how few calls we were getting, because the guys did such a great job, that we did all 8,000 in November, was it November, December? So, and it's worked very well. You know, our routes are very balanced now. What we now have, we went from this to this, and we left some room for Thursday and Friday. So you know, Mondays and Tuesdays are kind of maxed out, but Thursday and Friday where we know we have development occurring, we've left some room for that expansion. I talked about the technology. So introduce technology over the last few years. This helps us pinpoint problem areas. You can see, we'll get calls, and we have this data that, you know, the reason we weren't able to get to you, and we'll go back out, is there's a car in the way, or there's a dumpster in the way, or you did not put your cart out, right? So we'll have those pictures that will help us. It certainly helped us collect the data, data that we needed before we could make the wholesale changes. All right, here's what I was talking about before. We see here, this is where at Public Works, and then this is on the route. This is a stop. This is going up, this is recycling, so this was going up to what was formerly ECVC and then back on route. And then the same thing here. This is the transfer station at Pitt County, and then what time we get back. So we know what routes are causing us to get back, you know, 1:45, 2 o'clock. I mean, we want to get back a half hour before, 40 minutes before, so we have enough time to fuel, to wash the truck, to do greasing, maintaining the vehicle, so, and the post-trip inspection.
So Kevin, you can get, and I'm sorry to interrupt, you can get 950 households worth of trash in one truck?
One truck.
Before you have to go to?
No. No, no, 950 in a day. So we'll, we may get 500, then go to the transfer station?
Okay.
And then come back, finish the route, then go back.
So you might make two trips in?
We, we.
January. After about 650 houses, that's about all the truck haul.
All right. Talked about benchmarking. Again, 20 cities, including Greenville up here, these are listed in priority order, not priority order, in, they're ranked by the, I have three ad valorem, that means it's in the general fund, and the rest are ranked by the monthly fee. You see us way down at the bottom there, $16 a month. You know, the service we provide, you see weekly, 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 weekly schedule, and there are two other cities besides us that do everything on a weekly basis. And again, we're one of the lowest in the state, we're the second lowest fee in the state, so we're providing this excellent service for a really low rate. And just some data on that. The existing average of the 16 cities that are enterprise fund is $22.30 a month, so we're in there at $16 a month. We're 40% lower. Again, we're one of the three surveyed cities during, that offer weekly service for each sector. One of the things, one of the things we looked at is, you see a lot of recycling biweekly here. Do we do that, or do we stay with weekly? We're recommending that we stay with weekly. Just what we talk to other cities about, cities that have gone to biweekly, they'll see a lot of transfer of the recycling from the blue cart to the green cart in the weeks where we're not, we would not be collecting. We think it makes sense to stay with the weekly service. And I'll just add solid waste in the back a little bit. Beyond that, I don't know if you're still in your thunder here, but that rate has not been adjusted in eight years. So the efficiency that we're operating is done by not passing it on to the, to their Next slide, look at that. We'll say that.
That was a fun slide we made.
Brock does customer satisfaction surveys, and the last time we did a customer satisfaction survey, you look at solid waste sector across the country, and there was 30% satisfaction up to 92, and I think we were at 91, one of the highest in the country. So it really is tough to beat the service we provide for the price, for the price we provide. for the price, for the price we provide, right? Take the price out of it. It's tough to beat the service that we provide. So very efficient routes, great personnel in solid waste. I do want to compliment, great personnel and fleet. And also city council and city management that allow us to, very supportive of what we do, and allow us to have the equipment that we do. On that point, certainly over the last several years, we've had hurricanes, we've had other types of events where we've been contacted by several, I'd say five-plus cities that need help. They'll reach out to us, can you loan us equipment? Can you loan us equipment and operators? We haven't had to do that, you know? So we've been able to provide service to help other cities in their time of need. So, and as the city manager was saying, here's a great graph. I mean, I don't know, we've held the rate steady for eight years. And it's, you know, I know one of the things, we've been working on this five-year plan, but before we wanted to bring, before I wanted to bring this plan to you, we certainly wanted to have the most efficient routes and the most efficient service we can. So we embarked on that year 2023 change in single-family routes.
And now, to give a little bit more clarity to this, back in the years of 15, 16, 17, we did implement a five-year plan. And it was a stabilization plan. And as you can see, we've been able to ride that plan for almost eight or nine years. So now, Kevin's getting ready to go into the next audio.
Some of the challenges, Buddy Sissipus there is pushing that rock up the hill. I think that maybe demonstrates some challenges. But truck prices have risen 50% in the last 10 years. So prices, material prices have gone up. Equipment prices have gone up significantly. Parts and fuel, city labor, certainly as the, we have a lot of permits, construction permits that have come in, and as the population continues to grow, our routes are going to expand, and we'll probably need to add additional personnel. And I'll show you some pictures. When I showed this picture to the city manager, it's under the capital, I won't. So we need to expand in this area. The question is, where are you going to expand to? So that's a critical area. And then recycling contamination. We'll talk about that. A threat to increased costs. And I do want to also put out there, excited to provide this update. We applied for a grant through the state for recycling using AI-based cameras in our hopper. And so as the contaminated article comes into the hopper, they'll take a picture of it. They'll know what address we're at, and we'll send a postcard out to that address, tell them, identify, and show them the picture of what the incorrect item is, and say, this item should go to your, either your green card, or this is a bulk item. So we should have that in the next few months. We've received word about that grant last week. And I do not see her here, but I do want to say thank you to Abby Kimmel in the city manager's office. She helped Delbert a great deal with that grant application, and we're successful in getting this.
So that is a, that grant will allow us to have these cameras that allow us to better control the contamination. And to make sure that we're putting people on notice that they are contaminating, and get that correct.
And only one and two plastics, no, three, four, five, or six. Am I right?
That's, that is correct. But that is driven by RDS, our current recycler materials facility. So that is correct.
The reason I hesitate to answer is, depending on what the market is, right? It's the business market that's driving that, as opposed to the greater good of recycling. So if there's a business market for it, they can sell it. They can move the product. If there's not, they just transfer it to the transfer station and to the landfill. So that, we've seen our recycling, right? Glass, we used to recycle glass, now we don't. We don't have the ability to make that easy. So it's not, you know, what's green, what's great? It's the business market that's really driving that.
And 90% of plastic is recycled, even if people do it right?
Yeah.
Unfortunately, that's kind of where we are right now.
You know, we met with our new contractor. They mentioned something about, you know, if a cardboard gets wet, right? It's not as attractive to recycle that. I think they still recycle it, but, because cardboard's always getting wet. It's wet inside the hopper. So anyway, it just, the business market drives what is recyclable. All right, we talked about vehicle costs, alluded to some of the increases, and you hear a lot about this, really the rest of the night. And you can see, I think I said 50% increase in the last 10 years. 63 on side loaders, front loader 70%, knuckle boom 50%, our leaf collector 100%. So some significant price increases there. So, and here's our vehicle replacement fund, right? This is our enterprise fund. We have eight front loader trucks, 18 side loader trucks, seven knuckle booms. This is the number of trucks we have for each. And this is the period of probable use, or the life of that truck. Right? So life of a side loader is five years, and we have 18 of them. That means we need to replace 3.6 every year. 3.6 at $425,000. I'll talk about our solid waste fund is currently paying $1.2 million into the VRF. If we look at what's happened over the last three, four years, what we should be paying is $2.2 million. So we're shorting the fund, and we need to, we need to address that. Certainly, analysis of our repairs show that after the five-year mark, the costs increased significantly, in particular in the side loaders. These really, the side loaders are really the workhorse of the fleet. So we recommend that the life of several vehicles be modified so that we're replacing them before maintenance occurs. And that does a couple of things. It will increase the rental rate, but will reduce maintenance costs. It will keep the vehicle on the road, right? It will decrease downtime, and it will increase surplus revenue. So we're talking about a new rental rate going up to $3 million annually, and this is what's going to be built into the five-year plan rate. But what that does, this last part, increase the surplus revenue in several years, as we start to turn over these new vehicles, our surplus revenue will increase from $100,000 to likely $1 million. So we'll still be at a delta of $2 million here. Right? $3 million going into the fund, $1 million coming back towards us. All right, and then talked about the general statute, the city to create a separate VRF for enterprise funds, for the solid waste enterprise fund.
Kevin, when you talk about a rental rate, we're purchasing the trucks, but if you're turning around and selling them back, or having to buy new trucks after five years, you're considering that a rental?
The rental rate means that in order to buy that new truck, so I buy a truck, or to buy the next truck, I'm paying into that fund every month of the year. So five years, 60 months, $425,000, I may be paying $6,000 a month into, into the, what we call the vehicle replacement fund.
Yeah, that's what we do. We've set up this separate vehicle replacement fund. And then what we do is the solid waste fund pays into that vehicle replacement fund a certain amount every single year. So when it gets time to replace that vehicle, we've already got the money there to replace it.
And you call that a rental?
That, exactly. You'll see the same thing tonight when we talk about the general fund budget. We have, just within the general fund, to replace fire, EMS, police, we're contributing $3 million a year of general fund dollars into the VRF, so that when it comes time to make those replacements, that the money's already there. The issue that Kevin is saying is the fact that we've seen such dramatic increases in the market, where the price over the last several years has doubled. And you can call it inflation, you can call it supply chain, whatever. The cost has doubled. So what that means is that we have to be paying more into that VRF fund to make sure the dollars are there when it gets time to replace.
Kevin, what we do with the vehicles once we think they need to be replaced, is it a trade-in value?
Yeah.
How's that, so who are we dealing with as a merchant?
So we put them on GovDeals, all right? And put them up for auction. And we'll get, we've seen some of the knuckle booms, when they were in big demand, a 10, 12-year-old knuckle boom that we bought for maybe $170,000, $180,000. We're selling it 10 years later for $100,000. So.
Is it, is it better for the city maybe to look at the private market also? Because everybody on government wants a cheap deal. They're looking for the, you know, the government's hard to use it up, and then they don't care what they get for it. Whereas the private market tends to be more, they know what they're getting.
Yeah, true. I mean, GovDeals is a, has a government name to it, but it sells it to the private market, right?
I'm with that. I'm just saying, usually buyers go on that looking for the basement prices.
Yeah.
What can we do more to find, maybe get a little bit more out of our used vehicles and now restore end-of-life plan at five years, is what I'm really looking for.
Yeah, I think, you know, we start selling the vehicles at five years, we're going to get a pretty good rate of return on that. But we certainly would be happy to look at different entities. I think it's in our ordinance that we sell our GovDeals, but we will, we can look at that.
Because you want to put enough money in this rental account to really replace the vehicles by buying it brand-new, and not considering any additional costs we get out of it for, to sell the vehicle, aren't you? Because if I understood, you're putting $6,000 a month away to replace these vehicles at the end of five years. Is that correct?
That's right.
Is that based on the actual purchase price? Or what you believe to be the purchase price less what we get for the other vehicle?
The purchase price net, and, you know, we need to modify that as we see what's happening in the market. But that's the purchase price minus what the revenue coming back.
Okay.
And not to get, not to make this too complex, because it does really get complex at the same time. You've got the daily deferment maintenance on the vehicles that is flowing through the fleet fund. So that's where you're taking that change in from seven to five, because by the time we rack up hundreds of thousands of miles on each one of these vehicles, the amount of time that they're spending in the shop, in repairs, makes it much more economical for us to go out and actually buy new by reshoring the life. You're spending so much more on the back end just in the maintenance of it.
There's a, I don't have a picture of it, but the graph over the life of a vehicle and maintenance and downtime. So this is year one, year two, year three, year four, five. Starts to go like that. Right? So as we get into that fifth year with these side loaders, we're seeing downtime, we're seeing a lot more expenses. And we have a great fleet maintenance shop, but you know, after year five, it makes sense to sell these vehicles for the maximum price, as well as getting a new vehicle here. We feel that's the best model.
And that goes back into, if I understand your question correctly, that goes back into the VRF?
That money would. Exactly.
And it took a lot of forward-thinking back about nine years ago, when it was first coming on in the city, to be able to create this vehicle replacement fund so that we can make sure that we have these sustaining dollars down the road. What you find is a lot of local governments don't have that, and that's why they're going out to the GovDeals to get on the used vehicles, because they can't afford the $300,000 to $400,000 of a new one, that's doubled in price in the last five years.
They don't have the use, let's imagine.
Yeah, having a vehicle replacement fund is, is the way to do business.
I remember setting that up.
Wonderful.
First time we were here.
It was not easy.
It was definitely a paradigm shift.
Currently, are we renting trucks to get on the road when others are in?
That's a great question. So a few years ago, three years ago, if you exact, we looked at leasing side loaders. And we leased four side loaders. And the way we started leasing them, we thought we would move forward with leasing vehicles. And at the end of three years, we'd just turn them in, and we'd get a new vehicle. We would miss out on the increased maintenance house. But right now, in this market, you know, we talked to the vendor, we have, we're returning these vehicles in August to them. We talked about renewing that, getting a new set of vehicles. We said, listen, I don't know what the price is going to be. We can deliver it to you in a year. You can sign a contract now. But I won't know the price until I deliver it to you. All right, so that's a bit risky to sign essentially a one-check, right? To charge you what they think. Because the interest rates are moving all over the place, as well as material prices, the cost of the vehicle. So it takes about a year to get the vehicle here, and that vehicle could be 20, 30% more than we thought, and the interest rates could be sky-high. So we moved away, at least for the time being, away from leasing vehicles, just because the market does not really allow that lease of vehicles.
There's risk in the market, and let's just face it, someone's going to accept that risk. Either they're going to, they're going to accept it, or they're going to shift it to us. And that's too risky for us to get involved with, because we don't, we don't want to sign on the dotted line for a lease a year, year and a half from now, that we have no idea, not only what the price is going to be, but what the interest rate's going to be. So that's how much the market has changed.
So Kevin, when we purchase a vehicle, the vendor that we use, are they the vendor that's buying the truck body and then putting the side loader stuff on it? Or they, how's that work?
Yeah, it's a little bit of all of the above. One of the vendors we buy, who we buy from, using the sheriff's contract, they'll be the fact, they'll be the person putting the two pieces together, the chassis and the body. Another one will be, they get the chassis delivered to them, and they put the body on it. So it depends on which type of truck and who the vendor is.
Are they any vendors that cut out the middleman? Because I know everybody in that pie is getting a piece.
We've tried to, as much as we can. We've tried to cut out the middleman, not go through that process. What it is, is there's, usually what we bring to you is, here's the price of a vehicle, and this price is based on Houston-Galveston Cooperative, the sheriff's contract, the state contract. So wherever we can find the lowest price. So that's the approved vendor in the state.
Thank you for answering my question.
All right, moving on to capital and facility improvements. Again, some expenses in the fund. Solid waste staff currently, we've been to Public Works in the back of the main building. We have what's called the Ascending Room. And they use, it's a common area that's used by several divisions. And the Ascending Room is being modified to accommodate training. Estimated design and construction cost for that, a little over a billion. We're looking to probably take that out of some fund balance. But here's, we've had some preliminary plans, and that's, you know, training facilities, some conference rooms, and some offices. So give them an official home. And here's a picture. Here's our, Delbert was talking about the wash pit before. And we can put a truck here, and a truck here. A lot of the trucks come back at the same time. So we're looking to expand this. And our parking stalls for trucks, as we get more and more, as we expand, we're pretty tapped out in Public Works. public works. And you see this, I mean, here's where our buses are, here's where our garbage trucks are. Here's where the storage of dumpsters and carts are, and I'll talk about that more in a minute. But we have a placeholder there for $3 million for expansion of this area, as well as redoing the asphalt and concrete where these vehicles park. All right, moving on to population growth. So in the last 10 years, we've gone from 37 accounts to 44,000 accounts. And by the way, we've gone from 73 people in solid waste, 73 to 48, like the onset of the side loaders. So great job, 20% increase in number of counts over the last 10 years. Instead of going up by 2%, since we're talking about revenue here, we're being conservative and projecting accounts, the accounts to increase by 1.5%. So in 2029, we're looking at 47,000. At least that's our projection in this five-year plan. So we looked at putting together a five-year rate plan. And first option we looked at is continue as is, what's the cost to provide the service as it, we've provided excellent service, we've provided a fantastic rate. The other option we looked at is based on our carts that we've handed out are about 10 years old. We're seeing a lot of UV degradation, brittleness of the carts. We lift up the cart, the cart snaps, the homeowner comes back, and they see that there's a broken cart. And you know, the cart's 10 years old, 11 years old. So they're calling us and saying, you need to give me a new cart. And when we tell them it's $85, there's some frustration there. The other part of that are dumpsters at the multifamily. They get rusted out, and then it's time for them to replace it. And we're dealing with a number of parties there. That's $2,000 for a new, for a new dumpster. And so they can give us a few more months. Well, the bottom floor is rusted out, and it's a danger to our folks lifting it over the carts, the trucks, sorry. So we looked at building the replacement of carts and dumpsters into the fee. I'll show you what that looks like. So looking at this, we show in '24, we're breaking even. And '25, fiscal year '25 coming up, we're going to hold the rate as it. We're showing that increased expenses because of our proposals to the VRF. We're seeing a deficit occurring in fiscal year '25. That deficit is modeled into these rate plans. So the rate plans do include an increase of personnel, and we would need, with the cart plan, we would need one more person.
And the cart, meaning one more person to manage the carts?
So I'll get to that in a second, but just how many deliveries and of carts and dumpsters it is. So here's a little bit more on that dumpster fee option and the garbage cart. The monthly fee for all residents would include the replacement of one refuse and one recycler. So there's a lot of houses out there that have three or four green carts. It'd just be, the fee is just for the one green cart and the one blue cart. If they have additional carts, they have to buy them. Multifamily, we would replace dumpster for dumpster. And the replacements would be based on an eight-year cycle. So we would systematically replace them moving forward on an eight-year cycle. There would be a delivery fee, $25 per cart and $200 per dumpster. And we were, when I put that in there, did some analysis of what it would cost if I ordered, how else could I get the, is our price accurate? Is our price affordable? We looked at how much it would cost to get a 95-gallon Toder cart, our cart that we supply to residents. If you buy it on Amazon, it's $370. So for us, it's 85. It was built in the fee, so a $25 delivery fee.
And Kevin, do you allow, or we allow payment plans for that?
So we started to move away from that.
Okay.
Yeah, we really have, just because using GUC in our billing system, it just becomes very difficult to track.
Okay, thank you.
So the official answer will be, we moved away from that, but if there's a hardship case, we, we'll work with it.
Okay.
So additional green and blue carts, $85. Additional dumpsters, $1850 or $1950. That is the rate right now, right? As it goes up, it'd be market rate plus the 25 and the 200.
Those cars, 96-gallon cars?
95.
95, okay.
There are 95, and to a lesser degree, we don't, we don't get a call for them so much with the 65s.
64, 65.
So I don't know if you can see this, but here is the modeling, the pro forma of personnel costs, operational costs. The other is unanticipated costs plus under collection of revenue. We go from 2024, 95 million to 2025, we're jumping up because of the VRF costs, and we see we're, we're getting in the $12 million range. That's our expenses for the system as is, for the program that we're currently running. So 44,000 accounts, we're anticipating 44,660 in 2025. We're keeping the, the rate at $16, revenue at $9 million. Our expenses are, our expenses are $12 million. So we're operating a deficit for that year, about $3 million, significant. But if we balance that, we can handle that. As we move into 2026, we jump up to $21, $23. And just remember, the average for the 16 cities right now, today, is 2230. So in 2027, we'll be right around there. And that average will have moved up by 2027. But $23, $23.50, and tapping out $24.50. As you can see, our deficit surplus for the year, right, we're starting to climb, and then right after '29, we start to level out and go down again. So, all right, so we're jumping from 16 to 2450. But again, those 16 cities, we're at 2230.
And this right here is just to put the information out. This does not go into effect next year, and there's still a lot of conversation with the public, as well as the budget process for the following year. We just wanted to go ahead and just kind of talk through what the issues are with the, with the fund, and try to go ahead and see over this next year, we can continue to start talking about this to minimize the impact.
Kevin, I have a question, kind of a nerd question. In those years where there was a deficit, being that refuse is an enterprise fund, where does that deficit come from? Does that come from the general fund?
No, any, any fund, anybody, anybody will say the same.
You can be waiting tables to make up that difference?
We're going to have to take that out of reserves.
Okay.
Unfortunately, we'll have to take that out. That's, it's a lot of money to take out of reserves.
Okay.
But ultimately, it's either this, we can, we can continue to operate the way we've been operating with our vehicles, and push, and kick that can down the road, or we can just bite the bullet right now and give ourselves a year with the public to be able to put that out there, not making these decisions hastily, but put it out there over the next year and give ourselves a plan that hopefully will make us, I'd like to think more than the next five years, but the next eight years as well, just like we've had in this last round of adjustments.
That's a great point. This is the five-year rate plan expenses, if the carts are included. And if we look at that, Councilman, Councilman, you had asked about, you know, a person who delivers carts, it's 6,000 carts in a year. So it's, that's an awful lot of carts, 100 carts every week. So, and 100 dumpsters in the course of a year. So the added expense of that, we're essentially adding a dollar, almost a dollar and a half, $1.30 to the previous, to systems and the normal operations that we run then. So that's what we, what adds to the plan, so.
And Kevin, with that, are we, somebody living in a two-family home, are they subsidizing that, are they paying forward on the dumpster costs as well, or is that a separate billing system?
No, it's the same billing system. Everyone's being paid, everyone's being charged this amount, $22, $24. But their, you know, the multifamily folks are paying for their dumpster, which is much more expensive, which is 10 times more expensive, 15 times more expensive. You know, the dumpsters are $2,000, the cart is $85. So the fee for that cart is calculated, you know, they can replace it every eight years.
I'm thinking this is spread out throughout the city, everybody has the same rate. We're paying in for the dumpsters as well as for the amortized cost of those cars.
Or vice versa. They're paying for the carts as opposed to dumpsters. But the rate is based on, I'm paying for my dumpster, you're paying for your cart.
Okay.
Right? Just based on the economics of how much a dumpster costs, how many dumpsters there are, and how many carts there are, and how much a cart costs. So you're, you're not subsidizing the multifamily, they're not subsidizing the same thing.
Do they have a different rate scale then?
Nope.
Just the multifamily?
Still works out.
Okay.
So, all right, so here is, let me just jump to this. Option one, option two, both $16 and $25. And then you can see the difference, $1.30, $1.30. So, all right. So this, this is what we're looking at. More work to be done, but I wanted, we wanted to put this in front of you. Again, 2230 is where most cities are right now. And you know, we'd go back to that chart, and you see somewhere at $35, $31, $32. And Kinston, Wilmington. So, so recommendation on this. So state staff will provide future updates in the fiscal year budget year on recommended solid waste fees. We don't have a recommendation on which alternative, right? We're going to have more discussion, we're going to have more discussion with the public with, with you guys, and come back as part of the next budget.
Yeah, any, any changes to the solid waste plan would not be adopted by council, any change, would not be adopted by council until June of 2025. And that would be for the, the new fiscal year, starting in July of '25, no, June of 30 of 2026. We just want to, we're just trying to be forward-thinking here and not spring something after last.
So when they come by, is there a limit of two containers per residence at a $20-some dollar fee?
That's right. There'd be one green, one blue. Or are you sure we could be flexible?
If you only have one, is there a lesser rate, or you don't do that because it'd be too much of a headache?
All right, we'll contemplate that. But
Probably am not going to keep going.
Thanks for bringing that up.
Everyone should have a green one, one green and one blue.
Or the user.
That's, that's right.
What was the website one more time, or the app that you mentioned?
Greenville collects.
Greenville collects.
You go into the App Store and type in Greenville collects. Then you download that, you can put in any item, right? And it'll tell you green cart, blue cart.
Maybe put Brian Ritchie on some of these dump trucks.
Is it helpful, is it helpful for people with a half-empty cart to keep it at their house and put it out the next week?
You know, so we talked about recycling.
Not that we would get a discount, but is that?
They wouldn't get a discount. I would bring it out.
Is it helpful? I mean, sometimes my trash, I don't have a lot of trash, it's true, I push it out every week.
Like we're giving them a break. I think about that, too. Like just letting them ride by, does it have a stop?
That's up to you.
Brian Ritchie on top of the boat, on top of your dump truck.
Do we have any further questions? We have one more item.
Well, I'll tell you what, there's a couple more slides here.
Oh.
Some proposal ordinances that we'll, we'll bring to you. This one's somewhat significant. During our, during our research of all the other cities, our benchmarking, we were not able to find another city that allows this. We allow a suspension of the solid waste fee. A homeowner, landlord can call to turn off the service fee. We do a 30-day inspection, are they putting out garbage? And if not, we'll turn off the fee. The residents still receiving benefit of yard waste, right? Some, they're not going away for three months and letting the grass grow two feet tall. Mosquito control, bulk item collection at multifamily. So the number of trucks, facility costs, utilities, personnel, that's all the same. Again, we're not able to find another city that provides the ability to turn the fee off. And GUC utility count is not turned off. So when GUC turns on a new account, it automatically comes on with a solid waste fee. If they do not turn off, turn off that account, and we, we turn off the service fee, we don't get notice that they're back. So there'll be times that they're getting free garbage collection, and we're not charging them. Right? So the recommendation, our recommendation on this is properties that are connected to a utility bill shall pay the monthly fee. If you don't have a utility connection, then you don't have to pay. But other than that, if there's a utility connection, a utility bill, the solid waste fee should be on it. So it's something to think about. We took this language from City of Raleigh. Oh, this one. Because of what we do, the expansion of services that we'll do, we'd like to change the name, officially change the name from sanitation division to environmental services division, which are really more closely aligned with the services we provide, mosquito control, various other things, some sweetening that's, that was envisioned in there. So.
We'd have to bring back that.
Bring that to care. So that is.
So suspending the refuse fee, in other words, I could suspend my fee, not put out my garbage for a month, and I would no longer have to pay that and just take my trash for term alone.
Are you a GUC?
I am, but, but under the current ordinance, it looks like I could suspend my service.
You know, we don't think anyone's done that, but yeah, but we don't encourage.
I believe, I'm going to go ahead and say, I believe in public services, so I don't mind paying my share. But I see this as a loophole right here.
You call us, and then we inspect for 30 days, and then we go back, and we could turn off the fee.
If you want to do that, because that effectively cuts off parts of the steering.
You still have water, sewer, gas, electric, you have stormwater, you're paying. You may never call us back and say, you're back, right? And so you're getting that service for free. We're, undoubtedly, we're going by in the, in the fall, the summer, and we're getting yard waste collection. We're doing mosquito treatment around the city. So.
Yeah, we certainly don't want to give the public any ideas, but we are trying to close the hole.
Yeah, I think so.
Especially with all the lots of debris.
Okay, Mr. Man, next item.
Thank you. Item number two is our business support program update. I'll call for our Director of Neighborhood Business Services, Tiana.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, so I am back for the second stop on the tour of Neighborhood and Business Services. Last month, we learned about some of the activities and priorities of community development related to housing. And today, we're going to be talking about business development. This isn't new division. It's designed to provide a focused and coordinated approach to supporting primarily small and minority-owned businesses. We do have, this division is staffed with three positions. We welcomed our neighbor, our business development manager today. And then we also have one of our two business liaisons who's actively filling that role. All right, there are several programs administered through this division, two of which are geographically specific, our Small Business Assistance Program and our Business Resilience Micro Loan Program, which is new, and we'll talk about both of those in just a moment. And then we have several other programs that are, were recently absorbed by this department that are specifically for minority and women-owned businesses. Incubate to Accelerate, Operation Hope, and our Hub Certification Workshops. All right, so our Small Business Assistance Program was funded through the American Rescue Plan Act, initially with $400,000. It's intended to make awards up to $50,000 for eligible businesses. The intent is to support new and existing businesses that are located within qualified census tracts as part of the pandemic recovery. Our first round took off about, about a year ago. We had four awards, totally $183,000 that were made in the, in the community. And currently, there are, as part of round two, there are seven eligible applications undergoing underwriting. So we look forward to making announcements about those awards soon. All right, our new Business Resilience Micro Loan Program, we're excited to announce the launch of this one, is designed to mitigate challenges related to infrastructure improvements in and around downtown, fostering resilience and sustainability amongst businesses within the urban core. So within our downtown district, as well as along Fifth Street, Albemarle, those areas that could be impacted by the, by construction related to the infrastructure improvements. These awards will be up to $10,000, 0% interest for up to three years. Applications will be online tomorrow. So we're excited about that. And our, we will be receiving the applications, however, effective Monday. That's May 13. And the proposed initial funding for the program is $50,000. So, Council, you will see that tonight as part of the budget amendment item, or, correct, budget amendment that's coming tonight. All right, so I'm going to invite Tish Williams, our new business development manager, up to highlight the MWVE programs and some of our accomplishments. Tish is not a stranger to this space. She has served as our MWVE coordinator for the past several years. So I joke, and we kind of told her this morning, and I was like, you don't really feel like a new employee. So I'm not going to treat you as one. She's ready to hit the ground rolling and is well-equipped to talk to you about our MWVE programs.
Thank you, Tiana. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Starting out, we have our Incubate to Accelerate Program, which is a growth and expansion strategy for minority and women business owners. We have some of our resources listed here. We do have a retail co-op space located in our Uptown District. We do have two tenants currently operating in the space. Then we have our shared kitchen space, which is located at the Gold Post Cafe. This is a commercial, commercial grater kitchen, which is perfect for food truck operators and caterers to use as a commissary and to prep their food orders. We currently have two pending applications. We had a former tenant in the space cooking with Carmen. She left us, she signed a contract with a health and wellness organization to provide live cooking demonstration classes. And then lastly, we have our MWVE Loan Fund. Eligible applicants can apply for up to $25,000 with a repayment term of five years or less. Our other programs, we have our Operation Hope 1 MBB Initiative. This began back in October of last year during our midweek. Our goal is to have 350 individuals register and complete an eight-week small business development course by 2030. We also have our monthly Hub Certification Workshops, which began, beginning of this year. The goal is to help minority business owners receive their historically underutilized business certification and to better position them, excuse me, better position them to participate in procurement with public entities. Once the owner has received their Hub Certification, they will be added to our MWVE director. Here we have some of our success stories, which include these four business owners. They were able to maintain or expand their business operation or launch their business. Wanted to point out Riverside Recreation, Ms. Bromsey. Wanted to point out Riverside Recreation, Ms. Bromsey, the owner, she was approved for an MWVE loan. She has a location at the Town Common Area. She expanded to her second location at Wildwood, and she also has a yoga studio on Dickinson And so far, as far as our Operation Hope One MVV Initiative, we have 26 referrals, 11 graduates, and we will continue to increase the number of hub-certified businesses. And now we'll turn it over to staff.
All right, so I'll state that this is a, a new division, and we are getting our legs up under us, we're really excited about the opportunities that exist here, and staff is committed, committed to and excited about diversifying the offerings and supportive services for small businesses around identified needs that include access to capital, financial management, growth strategies, and networking. So looking ahead, we anticipate capitalizing on opportunities around these areas, specifically technical assistance, providing training, marketing, et cetera, and on top of business improvement strategies, staff also look to collaborate for enhanced and deepen engagement and partnership. As we do know that there are other entities in our community providing similar services. So the city engages currently with offices at ECU, Pitt Community College, The Chamber, Downtown Greenable Partnership, and others to understand and meet the needs of businesses in our community. This by no means is an exhaustive list, but kind of just an idea of those other entities in this space with which we collaborate. And here's a visual of how some of those needs are met amongst this ecosystem. So there are several program discussions ongoing as opportunities to encourage the entrepreneurial spirit that exists within our community through ECU, and we look forward to bringing some of those conversations to fruition, to council very soon. And we're always looking to enhance our engagement efforts. Some of our existing methods include community events, email marketing, canvassing, going out, especially where we have geographic-specific programs where we're going door-to-door with those businesses, reliable referrals from partner agencies, social media, of course, and tapping into existing business networks. Okay, so some of our upcoming engagement opportunities include this month's Hub Certification Workshop on May 16th. Our MWVE Mix and Meet will be May 21st. This is an opportunity to, for small businesses, minority businesses, to showcase their products and services to city and GUC employees, hopefully as an opportunity to do business with the city, but then also just to spread awareness of their offerings. Pause in front of the picture. All right, and then the city will also, this office will also have a presence at the Juneteenth event. And we're available for any questions.
I would comment, I'm really excited about this office. The scholar would not exist without support from the city of Greenville and some of those other entities mentioned, especially the SPTDC at ECU. So I'm really excited, I'm really excited about the business support program under construction, think that will come in handy, especially to some of our new businesses. I really hope that they can all make it through, and I'm really happy that the city's come together to support them. Really, really great stuff. And something I thought would be helpful for new businesses, especially be a small business liaison, somebody that could give some advice and help to, to new business entrepreneurs who, it's just very confusing and difficult to know that you're doing everything right. You have to have fire inspections, you know, building inspectors for all of your other stuff. If it's a restaurant, you got to work with the health department, and then you have to make sure you have all your permits at the city. It's just a lot to do and to manage as a new business owner. I think that would be really helpful if there was a point person that new business could go to for that kind of advice and support, because it's, it's a, it's a, what I still worry about. I've been in for 13 years and I still wonder if I'm missing somebody.
Councilman Stollet, I think what you, what you say is very important, and even tonight, as we talk about the budget, kind of feeds into a direction that we will be discussing with you, a lot of this is just engagement. As you talk about the fact that, let's just look at solid waste, for example, there's a lot of things that we do, and we just need to be our, you know, our biggest, our biggest champions of getting that message out about what services, what that we do provide, and actually trying to foster direct relationships with our business owners. That's going to, and that's different. I mean, I may just say, I'm not, I'm not going to, I'm not going to try to beat around the bush and say that that's what we've been doing. It's a different perspective than what we've taken, that's trying to create that intimate relationship and trying to understand what the needs that you have as a small business owner and everybody else, whether it be in West Greenville or in the downtown core, but that's, that's the direction that we're going to be moving in.
I would say at minimum, some type of checklist or something, outlines, almost like your medical visits, is when you need to do checkups and things of that sort.
One more question? Most of Georgia?
Yeah.
Second by Councilmember Robinson, and second by Councilmember Blackburn. Vice versa.